Ready, we'll go ahead and get started. Do our indication please.
Well, thank you for this opportunity together to do the business business. We ask your guidance as we make decisions that affect the community.
They related reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag over which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
I'm so glad that nobody in here continues on with the "One Nation Under God." The paws there. Sometimes I'm in places where they're saying the pledge will get to that part and it's a little discordant because some people put the paws and others don't. Okay, for "Under Unfinished Business." That's what I went about to say. Under "If I'm making a change..."
It's a bad mistake.
"Under Unfinished Business," I would like to add to the agenda, discussion, possible action on the contract for the golf carts. Does anybody else have any other changes to the agenda? If not, how much are they going to be approved for those changes?
Second.
Out of favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, making that item two, "Under Unfinished Business." Okay, bring this to discussion, possible action approval, revisions to the waste per contract. I do hope that David, you can explain this to mine and Jim for mutual satisfaction here.
It's mutual, huh?
No, I hope he can explain it to a mutual satisfaction. He needs, I need him to make it mutual.
All right. Each of you should have an invoice that was submitted this week of the month with respect to the calculation of the base price. And the base price was to be based upon the average for the month of July. Now, on that invoice, you got one too, didn't you Jim?
Oh, yes, I did.
On that invoice, we'll be looking simply at the product that's described as an ultra LS diesel. And excluding taxes, you'll see that the base price, the average price for that month, last month, was $4.29 a gallon. Now, you'll see the unit price at $4.62, 400ths of a cent, as the unit price. And that's the manner in which they come up with the calculation. That unit price includes a federal diesel tax and a Pickens County local diesel tax. And the rate on those were 0.244 and 0.09. It does not include the state diesel tax. And the state diesel tax is 0.326. And again, I submitted this to y'all because I want y'all to be a part of the calculation on that base price, but it is my belief that if you use the base price on that invoice, so $4.62 and 400ths of a cent, that when the governor lifts the suspension of the diesel tax in September or October or November, at some point, when it is lifted, automatically you'll have a 36 cents or 32 cent increase in tax and cost, and that the county will be ultimately responsible for paying on that fuel surcharge. Now, Jerry and them have asked for a percentage of it, but we're automatically building in a tax increase to which we'll be paying a percentage of the cost.
Now, Jim and I had a good discussion on this earlier this morning. And based on that, I'm going to ask you to explain how the surcharge works.
He's got, he's got a percentage, a calculation of a percentage on the surcharge. But let's just say, for instance, today, the unit price is $4.62.4 cents a gallon. Let's say that's the base rate. If the price of diesel goes up, he's going to be able to play, but Waste Per Row will be able to play a percentage of that increase.
A percentage, not the entire increase?
Not the, not the entire increase, but a percentage. So let's say we get into, well, I'll just use November hypothetically. We still have the same unit cost as far as the underlying cost of petroleum and diesel, but then the suspension of that diesel tax has been lifted. So now, your base price, his unit price on his invoice is going to come in at $4.62 plus the 32 cents, which for argument's sake is $5, or $5. So now the county's going to be paying a fuel surcharge on the diesel taxes.
Okay, fuel surcharge that formed you, that you put out for it. Is that going to be a certain percentage of the difference? Or is that going to be taking the current, the $5 and applying it across all of them?
If I recall, it's going to be a percentage of whatever the difference is.
The difference.
Yes. But nonetheless, that's not a, that's not necessarily an increase in the fuel cost and an increase in the diesel cost.
And I, and I see where you're going with this. So essentially, if we leave it this way and we don't build in the diesel sales tax to the base, we'll pay that surcharge every month going forward, Jim?
Once the, once it's lifted.
Once it's lifted, yeah.
Yes. No matter, assuming that your, your cost, your monthly cost is the same for your...
Because every single month, that's going to be over what the base is.
32 cents.
So that gets calculated every month. Yeah?
Well, he said something there that I'm not sure I'm clear about. And I'm not, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but what, and I talked to Jerry Harrison about this at the time in June, I believe it was, that we agreed to incorporate two things that I thought was appropriate under the circumstances, was a fuel surcharge and reduction in terms of the contracts of the re-use. The fuel surcharge, what Harrison volunteered to do, and we agreed that he would provide us with his exact cost for the month of July as the base. Now, where I disagreed with David is, is that if you build in the state fuel tax and that, and we, nobody can predict what is going to happen, and that state tax is not imposed or reimposed immediately, then we're going to be paying, based on the tax being there, the percentage when he's not actually paying, because he's going to charge us that every month. David shaking his head.
Okay, so the first for July, we'll pay 4.624, is that right?
That's his unit price.
That's what we'll pay for July?
That's correct.
Okay.
No, 4.624, David, is the price including the federal tax. If you take 4.29 and you add the federal diesel tax, that's how you get to 4.624.
But he pays the federal diesel tax.
He's not expecting the county...
Yes, he did.
Yeah, he's not expecting the county to pay for that.
I, I agree with that. So the, my argument is this, base it on what the actual cost is for the month, because we're going to get that every month, right Sandy? And that surcharge is going to be on the invoice every month.
But Jim, you're, when you say base it on the cost of every month, then all of a sudden you've got a base that has been adjusted. This contract will have a single base, it won't have multiple bases. Your base is being established in the month of July. This is the, this is the unit price that we use to calculate if there's a surcharge in favor of the vendor contractor, or if there's a surcharge to a reduction in favor of the county. We don't, we're not going to adjust the base.
But, but he's not paying the state tax and that.
Yeah, but he will be, and that automatically will kick it up.
Let me, let me say another couple of things here, because there's, and I see points on both sides. But first of all, the point I want to make is, in July, we're paying 4.624.
Yes.
Okay. So the question is, what are we going to be paying in August, September, and so forth? If we, if we don't add that back, then we're setting the unit price and artificially leveling it. And so, once the state starts imposing the diesel tax again, we'll be paying that diesel tax, because that will be part of the, part of the increase. And it appears to me, not none of us will be paying that diesel tax, but we'll be paying some percentage of that as a, as an adjustment.
As a surcharge. I tried to look real quick for the, what I submitted, the formula that he had done.
Before I lose my train of thought.
Yes.
So I, I say on this side of the table, if we don't add the state diesel tax in, we're going to be hurting ourselves, not them, but us going forward. They'll be fine either way. Now, to Jim's point, and probably to Waste Per Row's point, if we, if we do add that in, are we not telling them then that they have to pay it at that level for the next couple of months?
No, I, and I wish Jim would have contacted me earlier with...
I argued with you yesterday for that...
I know, I know, but you've had a subsequent phone call with Jerry, and I think that one of the things that I was going to discuss is maybe instead of doing it on a unit price, using the base as the base price as what doesn't include taxes, which would be the $4.29, and then have a, an inclusion of whatever the appropriate taxes.
Those things may be.
Why I would suggest that is, is if the tax rate changes, maybe the governor doesn't lift the taxing completely, maybe they change the tax rate in September, October, says you want to only collect 10 cents on it, or maybe 15 cents, or whatever, then, then you, you're not adjusting on, you're purchasing at rack price, is what you're doing, you're paying for it at what would be the rack price, the $4.29. I can work the formula, I think.
It sounds like what you're saying is that what we use is, we use the excluded tax rate plus the total of the...
Whatever taxes.
So in this case, it would be, 4.29 would be the base, and we would add the 1.244 and the 1.09 to that to come up with 4.62 that needs to be paid.
That would be what's paid, but the base would be the $4.29.
Right.
That's, that's where your adjustment is.
So you start with 4.29, and that's where all of the surcharges will be calculated going forward.
If it's lower up more than 4.29, yes.
Yeah.
What if it's lower?
Yes.
What if it's less than 4.29?
Well, then it would be calculated down.
Right. You could be able to fluctuate.
That's what we've got in the contract now, right? For the total.
It should be. That was in the last discussion we had, where if it goes down below that base number, it's going to be adjusted accordingly with...
What was being discussed was the unit price.
Yeah, I understand, but they're asking if that, that adjustment formula would work if we went down below...
It's favorable to either form.
And just for my own clarification, what we're addressing now is the federal, county, and state taxes. Those are going to be our fixed costs moving forward.
Assuming none of these entities do the taxing.
Exactly. And whatever, whatever rate they set for that, that's going to be what we're going to consider a fixed cost. And the variable formula is going to be, the formula that we're, we're talking about that Jerry came up with, applies solely to the price per gallon pre-tax of the diesel.
That's what David's saying, what I agree with.
Yes, and, and, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for myself. And I'm completely okay with that, because, yeah, the, the fixed costs are fixed costs, and, and we, we need to budget for those, otherwise we're kicking ourselves.
Okay, so we're not adding anything, we're just saying the fixed cost is, we're saying that the base is 4.29 plus whatever the fixed cost of taxes are.
Well, the base line should just be 4.29.
That's what it is.
Okay, and then you said plus, so I don't need to use the plus in there.
Okay, the base is 4.29. What's paid will be the base of 4.29, plus any surcharges going forward because it's going up and down.
Right.
Plus the fixed cost of taxes.
Yes.
And we can, we can figure some way to write that into a contract.
Yes, I mean, we'll just do it as the, the unit cost excluding taxes.
Jim, does that work for you?
Whatever, whatever you all say, I think Harrison's interpretation is different than what we're discussing here. That's the reason that he provided us with his actual cost.
Well, he's still going to...
Well, when you say the fixed cost, the taxes, what he's showing here is his cost, his, his total cost. And if it fluctuates up and down, and that would be fuel price and taxes.
Except that taxes are going to be very unusual if, if those change. Other than the fact that, yeah, it'd be reimposed in a couple of months when the governor decides we're going to start paying them again. But when that happens, then what's going to happen down here is, there'll be another line that says state diesel tax, X amount of money, and that'll be added in under the unit price side.
But the vendor won't receive the benefit of the fuel tax increase from the county in, in the form of a surcharge.
On taxes.
That's, that's what you're trying, trying to avoid.
Is the surcharge calculated just on the rack price, or is it, is it total price?
It'd be on his, on the cost of excluding taxes.
Now, he's going to pay those taxes, and we're not trying to beat him out of that. We'll add the amount of those taxes back to what, to what he gets paid, such, so that in July, for instance, the fixed price would be 4.29, but the amount he would receive would be 4.624, because, you know, he's going to pay those taxes, and we understand that, and we're going to add that back to, to the base rate, so that he's not out of any money. Now, next month, if he pays, if figure excluding taxes is 4.50 instead of 4.29, and the governor still hasn't changed anything about collecting, then the amount of these taxes is going to be the same next month as it was this month, but the 4, the 4.50 will be compared to the 4.29, that difference will be taken, the surcharge will be calculated on that and added back to 4.29. And then once that amount is established, we'll take the amount of the taxes, add that back to that, and then we've got the total that we're going to pay for gas or for fuel for that month. So he's still, as, as the rate for fuel goes up, he's still, his surcharge goes up based on the formula that he's provided. Now, if it goes down, if next month it's 4.10 for the excluding taxes, then we'll apply that surcharge, and he'll have some figure less than 4.29, and we'll add the total of taxes back to that, and he'll get something less than 4.624 because the prices have gone down. But his concern is prices going up. As those prices continue to go up, taxes are going to stay steady, but the, the fuel prices will go up. That new figure every month will be compared to the 4.29, and the difference between whatever that is in 4.29 will be used to calculate the surcharge, which will be added back to 4.29. Then we will add to that the static amount for the taxes, and that's what he gets paid. It's not going to hurt him.
I'm not worried about it hurting him, I don't want it to hurt us.
And that shouldn't hurt us either, but that shouldn't hurt us. If we start tinkering with, you know, adding it back to the base, or not adding it back to the base, or whatever, that gets hairy, and you and I tried to work that out, and we couldn't. But I think this is a solution that everybody can...
The county doesn't need to be paying a surcharge on the town with suspended diesel tax from the state. You know, really, he's getting the benefit of a surcharge on the fuel in the first place when he doesn't have the tax like that, and it wasn't accepted like that. So I don't see where he should have any issues, because he's going to be made whole. If it costs more than $4.29 on the rack price, he'll get a surcharge. If it's less than 4.29, the county will get a deduction on the bill, but...
He shouldn't have a problem with that, Jerry.
How do you want the motion worked?
I think the easiest thing is to establish the base rate at the unit price for the month of July excluding taxes.
I just made that motion.
Now, I have one other question. In one of the, one of the emails, you excluded out the...
Can we have a second? We have a second before you...
I'm sorry.
I feel so powerful.
You feel like Christmas.
I can say this, or I can let it die. I will say it. I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Now, the question, David, in the email that you sent, you excluded out the gasoline, fuel surcharge. And we said fuel surcharge, and we didn't say diesel surcharge.
Does he have any equipment that he's utilizing?
He has service vehicles that utilize gasoline.
I didn't think that we were paying for service vehicles.
Well, if they have to come to one of our facilities...
Jim, that's not in the contract though, so I, I'm hoping...
There ain't none of this in the contract.
I know, but what I'm saying is, he's established a base rate for his hauls, he's established this for his hauls, he hasn't even envisioned charging the county for fuel or...
I imagine so.
I, I, no. I mean, my recommendation to the board is, is that that's not in the component of what the charges are. I mean, there's no cost to repairs, he's got a responsibility to maintain. And I don't, there, I don't recall there being any sort of inspection or repair, you know, anything that would be necessitated by visiting the site.
What started all this was the haul rate. And, you know, he wanted to go up on the haul rate concerning our gas prices, and as I understood it, we were going to give him fuel surcharge rather than going up on the haul rate. And that would equalize things for him.
Okay. Now, how do we, they haven't signed the contract, so we're going to, we're going to develop the contract with those changes?
Just two changes.
Two changes. Terms, terms of the contract.
Three year term, and then the calculation.
And we're going to execute that and send it to them, right?
The board will have it introduced to them at the third, next Thursday's meeting, or Wednesday and Thursday, and then the board will vote to approve it and by Charlie deciding. And then, then we have to execute the contract on behalf of the county. We'll still need their signature.
And the begin date would be, what, August 1st?
Do we decide it? Wouldn't anyone go back to three years, like the end date would be?
He said July 1st, if I recollect.
That's what I was thinking. So from July 1st for three years.
And that coincides with the state fiscal year, so it's easy to remember. It's when they get off of those other months that it gets difficult to remember.
Well, our fiscal year is different than the state's fiscal year.
Right, I'm not saying it's not, but that 7-1, a trigger. It, it, it's kind of like the Elme grants and stuff, you know, all that stuff has to be to the state before their fiscal year closes for the upcoming fiscal year. It's when we get one stuck, like on November 1st with an elevator renewal, Otis Elevator Renewal, that kept getting missed, and every time you get a short window to fix it, and then you don't fix it, and then you're stuck with the contract. Charlie inherited it many years. Okay, yeah. We inherited a contract for five more years, so that's, that's the reason. It'd be preferable to keep it on 7-1.
All right, we have a motion of seconds or any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Makes add on business, golf carts, and contracts again, whether we actually have to terminate the contract or what we have to do. So I know Mike, you feel that the contract does not have to be terminated, it's kind of known for it.
I mean, it's, they're going to pay us four carts. In return, we will pay those carts out.
Who's paying you for the carts?
Easy Go.
Easy Go. Were the Yamaha carts?
Correct.
Why don't, just, I can't remember from that Yamaha golf cart contract, does county take ownership of it?
And if you were to go term five-year lease, and this is wasting nothing past, if you go full-time, we've never done it full-time, but if you go full-time and five-year lease, they pay it at the end of the dollar line.
One dollar line. Okay, so this one's going to close earlier, Easy, Easy Cart's going to pay for it. Where are the golf carts going?
Easy Go's paying.
When you contract yours...
Paid off.
Right. They're paying, they're paying us between $3,000 and $3,500 per cart, which is 51 carts.
And that will end up to pay off with the old, the left over.
Absolutely.
Then my concern on that one's going to be is the ownership of the vehicles. Cart still resides with the county. But Easy Go's going to expect to have ownership when they make that payment, right? I think y'all need at least a motion to, to do whatever would be necessary to allow the transfer of ownership from, from the county over two months ago, because otherwise...
I mean, we're, what we're saying is, we're selling, we're disposing of county property, so we have to do that, we have to clear that hurdle.
But now, y'all listed the chairman, the owner, the disposal of county property unserviceable. And the question here is, is this is probably not unserviceable.
It's, it's, I hope not, what they're paying for the cart, but, and if we have to do that, you know, it's, it's a 30-second thing. I don't think any of the commissioners will be opposed to that.
I'm just trying to make sure we get everything done we need to do.
So if we, if we have a motion to dispose of the carts, and we have a motion to do whatever is necessary to make the transfer, do I do it?
I think in whatever's necessary, terminate the contract if necessary. It may not be necessary to terminate it, but you still don't want a live contract out there when you don't have ownership of the vehicles anymore.
So approval to terminate the contract if necessary?
Yes.
You, you okay with it?
I mean, the day, they will, they will take those cars the same day they brand the new ones. And I don't have a 100% confirmation that it's going to be next two years. I do know that, but there will be like a swap.
Okay, we're getting a check from Easy Go. Where do we do that check?
Want to hand it to Sandy or...
Okay, that's got to go to the current, whoever has the contract.
Correct, the Yamaha.
So we're going to pay it off before we even-
Right.
Well, now, we'll be paying it off the same time they get the cars and deliver the new ones.
Right.
This is we can, we, yeah.
As quick as we get them.
So they're bringing the new cars out, and you get your check for the old cars. Which comes to Sandy, probably in the long with invoice. And then we'll pay off the old cars.
Pay off the old ones.
Right.
Now, you see, that's, that's something we've never done. We've always kept the same company. And we ran them out after four years, and they just, you know. Now that we're changing companies, this, this totally different lease.
But if, if it goes that way, though, Jim, are you okay with it?
Sure. Kind of is.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what somebody-
So basically Yamaha is going to invoice us for whatever remains on that lease?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's a five-year lease.
So we need a motion to pay off the current card.
Right.
A motion to dispose of the current card.
That's wrong. Actually, actually, probably dispose it off first. I don't think, I don't know if it matters.
So we're not going to?
Well, we are.
Until we pay it off, we can't, we don't-
You're right.
That's why I was looking that up.
Okay, so pay off the cards, dispose of the cards.
And terminate the contract if necessary.
Terminate the contract.
And terminate, to terminate the contract would be after you've done all that and paid them off, and then they're gone. That way you would-
Really, there's no contract to terminate, so we'll just pay them off. May not be.
But again, I, we need a-
Well, there's some dispute over that, which is why the, the motion will be terminated if necessary.
So I'm going to second that motion. It don't hurt you.
I did, but it will second it.
You're, you're seconding the motion that I just made to pay off the cards, right? And to, okay. I would make a motion, pay off the cards. Dispose of the cards. And terminate the contract if necessary.
Second.
Don't confuse me.
Well, that's what I wrote down ten minutes ago.
Um, all right, any other discussion on that? I'll look for you.
All right.
All right.
Before we leave, I assume the general fund is going to percentage of the profit from these. It's giving you hard times.
Has Charlie seen those yet?
I have not.
You've got a raggy floor.
Oh, my goodness. That's sweet. Does it have Bluetooth? Does it have Bluetooth? I might have to have one.
It might as well be forty.
From the year of May.
Oh, Mike. Have you invited the editor of the commissioners out to take a ride in the new cars?
Every, every one we give them, that's going to be the first thing I do. I want the GPS working. And that is all installed at the car barn and at the pro shop.
Be sure you're trying to take it across the green.
Yeah, if you want to.
I know, that's what I'm saying, just try it.
GPS is, they have to kind of install at the car barn and at the pro shop. That way, when the car's put to sleep at night, you'll cut them off or nobody. If a key was left in the car barn, it was, it's like open. If the car wouldn't run, they'd have to pick it up and haul it out of it. And if, if that next day's play has changed, then we get in there in the morning, we'll enter what day it's hard to bet on, and how you agree. And then it picks it up, and then they're already in the car barn. So when it grows up, they know what, that car knows where to go that day.
Well, I don't want to test it to a GPS system stop.
Right.
And I want to make real sure there's a find your way home feature.
It's got to have navigation.
It'll run him.
Okay.
Really deep. We went to a Zoom meeting last Friday morning with, with, with a guy setting up. It really does a lot more than what I thought. Good.
Mike, you do a great job up there.
Yes.
And I'm sure Andy and Monty will join in all that too as well to get a test.
We need, we need to, it's really, I want them to come out and ride it and then see what it tells them to do when they get in an area that they're not supposed to be in.
Monty, I bet you can get artificial out of that.
Sure.
Have a little GoPro or the dashboard?
Yeah, there you go.
I mean, it, it's got a screen, it's touch screen. And I'm not going to let the officers send a message back to us. I don't think that would probably be good in some cases. But when they mess up, it's going to sound alarm, where they're, it's not just going to have a message up there, it's going to sound alarm where they know they messed up. And then they look up and see.
How about if somebody has an accident up there?
Everything that they do wrong alerts the pro shop.
Alerts?
Alerts the pro shop. So if you, you and David came to play, and you had six times during that round, I'll note it, you messed up six times. So the next time they go, I'll say to you, you had six violations the last time you played.
Pay that back.
Really, really going to help, really going to save the part of us and save the off course, save the off course, so.
It's pretty high-tech technology, is it, and you sell spare in the state?
Yes, I played, I played in a tournament Monday. And they had, and I had a crossover road. And, you know, told me to slow down, hear the traffic.
That's neat.
All that good stuff. That's cool.
Teenage boys are no longer happy.
Well, I had a car drive across Evergreen two weekends ago.
Oh, really?
They, they thought they wanted to do two duck hunts on it. It hurt him and bruised it. But if I'd have had those cars, they would have never made it to Evergreen.
You have to get Stacy and Stacy.
Yeah, I'm going to mess with Stacy the first time he comes, bloody.
Are you?
Yeah, I'm going to mess with him. I'm going to have a little fun with him.
You need to rig his car to take him somewhere he don't want to go. Okay, does anybody need a, a-
Can you go in and take it for a minute?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so a motion to go into executive session with no accident. I'll look for you.